Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
Can I make a motion to exit?
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel AA1?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel AA1.
Actually, let me just batch all of these. Do I have a motion to approve AA1, A1 through 58, B1 through 41, B43 through 45, C1 through 10, and C12 through 29?
I'll make the motion to approve the personnel you mentioned.
Second?
A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel B42?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? You're supposed to abstain, Tricia. That was the whole point. Let's do it again. All in favor?
Four.
Four with one abstention. Do I have a motion to approve personnel C11?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, second by Mr. McCall. In favor? Four in favor with one abstention. That was rough. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. We're going to go ahead and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First up on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Have the members received the documents? Any questions, comments, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. We did go ahead and bypass the public participation on agenda items because there are no speakers signed up. Next up is presentation and discussion items. First is Ms. Sarah Taylor with the Forsyth County Community Connection.
Multiple Sarahs on the third floor. Exactly.
Sarah, Sarah, Sarah.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Sarah Pedre, who is from Community Connections. And Sarah, hopefully, tonight is going to tell you a little bit about their nonprofit organization or our state grant that we get.
Hi, thank you, guys. All right. See if I can find presentation. Okay. How many of you guys have heard of the Georgia Family Connection Partnership or Forsyth County Community Connection? Okay, well, good. Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that because I'm going to tell you a little bit about both, about kind of the statewide partnership and then also what we do here locally in our collaborative. When I first moved here, I worked for the YMCA and actually opened our Forsyth County family location. And I was like, I'm never going to work for anyone else. It's about youth development, social responsibility, healthy living. I guess checking all my boxes. And then I had a friend who said, hey, Forsyth County Community Connection is hiring. And I was like, what is this Georgia Family Connection Partnership? And it's the same thing. We want, you know, babies to be healthy when they're born in stable and safe homes. We want them to be ready for school and really thrive when they get there and then give back to the communities that they live in. This is a quick, just little two-minute video on Family Connection that can describe it a little bit better than I can.
The growth and prosperity of our state is deeply rooted in our communities and the health and productivity of the children and families within them. But hard-working families across Georgia find themselves struggling to become and remain healthy and self-sufficient. And while help is available, it's often not accessible. Our most vulnerable citizens get lost in the complexities of a disconnected and overly-stressed system, and efforts to meet their needs are fragmented, missing, or unnecessarily duplicated. In both the private and public sectors, it's not enough to work hard for our children and families. We must work for them together. Georgia Family Connection was established to meet the desperate need for a statewide organization to disentangle the mess of barriers, service gaps, and inefficiencies obscuring progress and positive community outcomes. With the legacy of sorting complex issues and achieving lasting impact, we foster relationships between community leaders, investors, and lawmakers advocating for system changes. As the only statewide organization of its kind, with partners in all 159 counties, we have a unique vantage point that allows us to see the big picture while operating effectively at a local level. Our powerful network of collaboratives crafts local solutions based on local decisions. Every day, they tackle the challenging work necessary to realize sustained improvement in the conditions, prospects, and outcomes for our local children and families. In this vast web of people and services, every relationship matters, and every connection holds possibility. Georgia Family Connection maintains, simplifies, and supports this social infrastructure. Across five key result areas, none of which can be considered without the others, we leverage disciplined collaboration to yield a measurable collective impact. Together, we envision a Georgia where all children are healthy, primed for school, and succeed when they get there, and where strong families contribute to vibrant, robust communities that thrive. Together, we can forge lasting positive change for children and families. Together, we can ensure a bright future for Georgia. And "together" starts with a conversation. So, let's talk.
Okay, so it was in 1991 when Governor Zell Miller, the first Annie Casey Foundation Kids Count, came out and Georgia was ranked 48 in child and family welfare, and so he wanted to do something about it. Started a pilot program with 15 counties. I believe it was in 96. Our Council on Youth started in Forsyth County. In 2002, the Georgia Family Connection had a collaborative in all 159 counties. And so ever since we've had a collaborative, the Board of Education has been our fiscal agent that we've been so appreciative for. And so we get money from the General Assembly that goes to DHS. We have the contract with DHS with our fiscal agent, which is you guys. And then we're able to have our collaborative, which we operate based as a nonprofit separate. There's different types for each collaborative that you may go to. Ours is partner engagement, so we're really trying to make sure we're building strong relationships with community partners, not duplicating any services, getting everybody to the table to be able to address the needs of our community. We have different activities for our annual plan that we work on, so systems change. That's identifying struggles or challenges that maybe need a systems change, making sure, again, we're getting the right partners to help make those changes, having a strong collaborative. And then if we do have any programs and services or activities, that we're making sure that those are higher-functioning and to the best of their ability. We want family engagement, not only in the resources that we're providing, but also in our collaborative, in our decision-making, and in the strategies that we're working on. And of course, results accountability. We're tracking our data and reporting and making sure that we're sharing that information. Sustainability, of course, we need to make sure that we're able to continue the function of the collaborative. And then communication, spreading awareness, not only with our partners, but the community on the work that we're doing. Each collaborative has responsibilities, and this is actually, I mean, always, we've always had a responsibility to have a collaborative, to have a governing body, and then to be able to have a coordinator for each county. But this year, the state partnership has come with a new requirements checklist, so that way each county is operating the same. It used to be the same before. It's like if you've been to one Georgia Family Collaborative, you've been to one Georgia Family Collaborative. And so to kind of make it more uniform, sorry, they now has this new responsibilities. And I attached that. It's a little lengthy, so I figured you didn't want to go through it all here, but that is attached to this. And starting July 1, we're all in a review process. And so we're just going through to make sure that we're all adhering to those standards and responsibilities for the state. Again, we have to have a board of directors, and they're really wanting them to be more involved in the collaborative work and making sure that we do have good oversight. I had a link to this, too, if you guys wanted to look at our board of directors. In September, our regional manager will be coming to meet with us to make sure that we're on track to be in complete compliance with all of our new requirements, which we're looking very good. I know there are some counties that it's going to be a lot of work to get to complete alignment, but we are doing well. So what does our local collaborative do? We have annual community data reviews. Again, we're trying to find challenges or opportunities in the community to make things stronger or better. What partners can come to the table to help make those things better? And then we have our annual plan. Something new, we usually go over our annual plan review in the March and the spring, which would be at the end of our year. This year, we're doing it right out in the fall, and we're really looking to bring our collaborative partners together to make sure that they are aware of what our annual plan and what we're working on. Is this really what the community is needing to work on? And just make sure that's all in alignment. So in case, the great thing about it is that we can change what that annual plan is each year to kind of make sure we're going with the needs of the community. We have great data tools with the Family Connection. And so this is our snapshot, just kind of our profile. And these will come out probably every one or two or two years. And it's able to kind of have a high level on Forsyth County. We also can get one and compare it to the region or to the state. And so this is kind of where we can see if there's any emerging trends. There's also another form that would actually show kind of emerging trends, so if we can see like, wow, we've had a spike in, you know, low birth weight or deaths among teens. And then we're like, is this something that our community, our collaborative, really needs to be focusing on and working on? We have kind of our profile for the county. Again, we can pull this for the county compared to the state or for our region. They also have a tool where you can do county to county out of our region. And these are just the data points that Family Connection follows. We also have, there's tons of data resources out there. And so when we do our kind of data dives, we're able to pull those tools, too, and have some really good small group discussions on kind of what we're seeing, trends we're seeing, is there something there where the community needs to step up and take some action? And again, I have the link to those documents as well. And when I first started in 2017, our strategy was to reduce child abuse and neglect, so we really worked closely with the child welfare system, foster families, supporting those families, and the biofamilies. We've expanded throughout the years, and now we want to work with partners to increase awareness, provide training, increase supports, and enhance services for children and families in order to improve youth and family well-being, so kind of opening that umbrella a little bit more. Of course, you guys know aspects of a collaboration. Again, we're making sure we're connecting the right partners, building new relationships always, that we're not working in silos, that we're not being competitive, that we're not duplicating, and that we're really coordinating all the partner efforts to be able to help fill these gaps. For agencies, we also have, this is other council meetings, but I'd say it's more like we get backpacks and school supplies and PJs and it's a bunch of, and then other resources, you know, are going to be there, a similar event in Christmas time. We do support meetings. This is for not just foster families, but adoptive family, grandparents raising grandchildren. We work with the Dawson County DFACS and the Dawson Family Connection, the Way Home, to provide trust-based relational intervention trainings. And these are pretty intensive trainings, but it's for any caregiver that's caring for someone coming from a hard place. So it's not necessarily just foster care, it could be special needs, but we're able to be able to provide that training for free for the community. I'll touch on Care Portal in just a minute. Trying to create this one-stop shop for these families. We have an office over at Samaritan Drive. It's where our new resource center for unaccompanied homeless youth is. CASA is now housed there. Thrive, which was our supervised visitation, was going to be housed there. They're now not there, so we're trying to come up with a community solution on how can we still continue those services and be able to have it at one location so families can just come to one place. Care Portal, so if there is a family that is involved with DFACS and they've exhausted all their needs and they can't, whatever it is they need, they can't come up with it, they're able to enter that need into Care Portal. If the family is not involved with DFACS, we're able to enter that need into Care Portal. Last year, we served 20 children with an economic impact of 12,000. So I chair our LIPT meetings. This is local interagency planning teams. These are families that have kids that might have emotional behavioral, maybe substance use disorders, and we're able to have partners around these families come up with a community care plan. It may be a series of trying to seek residential treatment. It may be that maybe we need to think outside the box. We need to do equine therapy. Or maybe it's been a barrier trying to get insurance, and that insurance provider is right there in the room. So it's really trying to wrap around these families, give them the support they need right there in the room. Okay, other areas that we have are other work groups. Of course, we have the Council on Homeless Youth, our Drug Awareness Council, Mental Health and Suicide Prevention, working on our handle with care policy with first responders in the school system, Family Violence Task Force, our Child Sexual Abuse Prevention Coalition. I also chair our nonprofit partnership. This is, again, just trying to get other nonprofit leaders together to make sure that we're not trying to duplicate anything. And if someone already has a good food pantry, how can we help the community support that food pantry instead of coming up with our own food pantry? It's a example. So Unitus, that's something that we have access to because of the local interagency planning team, and that is a platform where we're able to make referrals with other agencies and see it. And what we're trying to work with now with a couple of our other agencies is if a case gets screened out at DFACS, then the DFACS puts that case into Unitus. And so now we're able to be on Unitus where maybe we can scoop up that family. And it wasn't warranted for DFACS, but we can still have community supports and provide those families with supports. With the Council on Homeless Youth, we are able to, well, we're aware of a grant opportunity through DCA, which is the Department of Community Affairs. And so it's for a support services-only grant. We've been open for a year. We're over on Samaritan Drive, and this is for unaccompanied homeless youth, ages 18 to 24, providing wraparound supportive services for them. Some of my staff, wonderful staff, is here. Margarita, our program director. Abigail, our amazing case manager. And then recently, we hired Don Hooper as our outreach coordinator, so we're really just starting to get going on this. It is a high-definition of homeless, which is a little different than the McKinney-Vento. So these are kids that are really facing homelessness. Some of the support services that we're able to provide, life skills training, we can do employment assistance, GED training, payments for mental health care, some outpatient things. Again, we provide the case management, help with transportation. It's a huge need. Assistance with food, clothing, and hygiene, having things actually at the center, which has been really great for them to be able to come to one place. Oh, and then real quick, I wanted Abigail to be able to share this, but I'll just real quick for time's sake. So currently, and we may have more now, but there's 15 clients for our drop-in center. 10 are boys, 5 are girls. Six of them actually were able to graduate high school this year, which was very exciting. We have seven clients that are pursuing higher education now because of the resources that they've received at the drop. Four have referred their own friends. And just in the month of June, we had 23 visits to the center. Eight signed up for Medicaid. Four found long-term stable housing. One client got their license and bought a car. And we also had three haircuts. We have a new partnership with a bar. We actually came in and did like haircuts for them. So it's been, it's been really cool to kind of see this space become like a really safe haven for them. Okay, last thing, of course, we have our sustainability. This keeps everything going. Our Walk of Recovery helps support our Drug Awareness Council and advocacy we do there. Blues and Q and Jingle Jog, that helps sustain all of our other items. We also fund the two AmeriCorps positions, the one at East High School and the one at Central, so these fundraisement events help us be able to do that for you guys. Sorry if I talk really fast. I was trying to take up too much time, but do you guys have any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for doing this. You know, our school system is amazing, and we have amazing staff, but they just can't do it all. You know, we need resources, we need help, and Sarah and her team are part of the collaboration. Let's bring help, right, to these, to the students in our, in our school system. And that's kind of how the drop-in center started, is that we needed somewhere outside the school to help some of these students. And Sarah and her team have taken that on. And, you know, if you look at our homeless youth population and the age, you know, obviously homelessness is a little bit more the older age group. And I know this one starts at 18 servicing them, but you also are servicing families that are having children that are homeless because the family's homeless. But also at 18, you know, some of these students are still in our school system, and they still have to finish school. And we want to help them, and Sarah and her team are helping them build that foundation so they can get their GED or they can graduate for college, because that's really the step they need to be successful and get out of homelessness and break the cycle. And so they're doing a great job. I encourage anybody that wants to go visit the drop-in center. It's a really cool area and it's centrally located, so if you guys want to go, and I'd love to go with you and meet you there. But, you know, how can we support you?
Well, gosh, I think you guys do a lot. I have an office here, which is tremendous. And being able to have meetings, we have our LIPT meetings here, we have our collaborative meetings here, so I feel very supported. And obviously, you know, being the fiscal agent is very helpful and being able to have the contract and go through. So if I think of anything else, I will absolutely ask, but no. Do you guys need anything from me?
I just want to say thank you also. I have, I have been, I have received services thanks to you and Forsyth Connection, so I appreciate all the work you do for our community. I was going to ask, what do you feel like is the greatest need that you see right now in our community? Is it prenatal?
Um, but one of the, we actually touched on the low birth weight, which we thought it was interesting that Forsyth County, I think it was like 19th, I think now we're 16th, but we wanted to, we kind of have a work group that's kind of looking into that to see what are other counties doing, is the demographics, you know, like what, what could potentially be happening is where we have the low birth rate. As far as for like our families, affordable housing, transportation, access to mental health services, it's, it's, you know, and too, where we're having these families now where if parents have been deported and kids are still here, how do we wrap around services around them? So there's, I could sit here all day and talk about things that their families are facing, but the great thing is, is we have an amazing community that truly cares and wants to come up with the solutions and wants to be creative. And in Forsyth County, we are blessed to be able to have so many options of partners and ways to be able to hopefully help, help these families. Thank you.
Anything else, guys? All right, thank you. Next time, I'll sign the document faster, okay?
Oh, no, you're fine.
So it came to me electronically, right? And then I'm brainwashed by like IT trainings where they're like, it's a phishing thing. They're trying to steal your money. So I get this email, somebody wants to send the school system money. I'm like, this has to be fake. I'm not signing this. So, sorry about that.
No, it happened in a lot of other counties, too. Everyone was like, what's going on this year? And I was like, we'll present in front of them. It'll be fine. But no, but thank you, you're fine.
Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for y'all do. Thanks.
All right. Next up is a Transportation Department update with Mr. Michael Satterfield.
We're about to find out.
Let's come up, how many names can we come up with for him?
There's been so many, some which we can't repeat. Well, Dr. Young, members of the board, I certainly appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to share with you a little bit of an update of where we are in terms of Forsyth County schools' transportation. If we look at, if we look at our purpose, generally, we come to work every day, and our purpose is to provide safe, reliable school bus transportation services every day that connect our students to unparalleled learning experiences that will allow them to thrive in school and in life. How do we do that? There's two major ways. Oops, that's not one of them. We'll do this. One is routes. You know, we provide transportation services to approximately 32,000 of our 54,000 students. These numbers we pull, we're required once a year, in the middle of the year, to, to look at ridership. And so we pull our numbers around end of November, beginning of December, once the beginning of school settles down, to determine exactly what we're looking at with ridership. And if we look across the board, as you might, as you might guess, elementary and middle school ridership, we're sitting about 66, 67%. When we hit high school, that drops off because we have more students who are transporting themselves to and from school every day. But we, we have, of those 32,000 students, we do that with approximately 1,000 bus routes, about seven, a little over 700 regular ed, almost 300 special education bus routes. The second way that we connect students to learning experiences is through field and activity trips. And we do that, and we organize them in two different ways, based, based on how they're scheduled. One is our overall field or activity trips, which includes athletics, CTAE, the Junior Achievement Center, fine arts, and then elective field trips that schools may choose to take. Last year, from, from the first day of school, August 1st to May 22nd, we, we scheduled almost 54, 110 field trips with about 9,000, a little over 9,000 buses and drivers, drove over almost 34,000 hours, 250,000 miles. And if you look at driver cost as well as estimated fuel cost, the school district invested about $1.275 million in activity and field trips for all of our students last year. In terms of staffing, this number changes daily, but when I put this presentation together, we have about five, we have 521 employees in the department, 394 bus drivers, 73 special education bus monitors, and then all the folks who are around, including me, to support those bus drivers and monitors every single day. When we, when I put this together, we had 25 open bus driver positions for the upcoming school year. As of today, we've got 23, so we added two. And we project, if everyone that we currently have in our hiring and training pipeline gets hired, in the time, in the timeframe we project, we'll have six openings by the time school starts, which is a significant difference from where we were last year. We started last year with 72 bus driver openings. And so we're really excited about how that's happening. And that didn't happen by mistake. You know, I want to publicly thank Derek Hershey and the Human Resources Department, as well as Larry in Finance and all of you for the support that you've given for some different initiatives that we put in place to try to make sure that we can resolve that bus driver shortage. You know, the one person that we brought on staff in Human Resources who's really been integral to this has been Scott Felkamp. And if you look on the right, you can see how. When we were trying to navigate our way through our bus driver shortage, I talked to all of my colleagues in our Metro Rista group to find out exactly what they were doing to try to either reduce their driver shortage or prevent themselves from having one to begin with. And what they told me universally was having someone in Human Resources who was dedicated full-time to following up with folks who indicated an interest. And you can see that in terms of total applications. From July 2017 through July of last year, we averaged about 180 applications per year. Last school year, we had double that. And, and that has to do with follow-up and follow-through. And that was the primary way that we were able to reduce this, to reduce our shortage and hopefully eliminate it by the time we get into September this year. How we organized, as you want to know, one of the things that we strive to do in Forsyth County schools is to make our large school system feel smaller. Our, our operations are divided into 14 education, transportation districts, housed in each one of our middle schools. And then on top of that, we have three special education transportation districts. As you guys well know, you can't really transport or organize special education transportation around geography because we have students who live in the south end of the county whose program is located in the north end of the county and vice versa. And so, so we strive to make sure that we're, we're put in a position where we can take those kids where they need to go regardless of where they start and where their program In terms of fleets and fleet and vehicles, right now, we've got 379, 72 passenger buses, 119 special education buses with a lift, and then 20 activity trip buses. We've got a total of 518 vehicles, 518 school buses in our fleet right now. Average age of those vehicles is 11.76 years, striving to get that under 10. You know, the, the more we reduce that number, the less we're paying in terms of maintenance and repair. We also own and operate 145 white fleet vehicles throughout all the departments at the district level, from food service to purchasing, to warehouse, to facilities, as well as our mechanics in transportation. Little history about, about our vehicle purchases. You know, I know Dr. Young has said on many occasions that for Forsyth County schools, SPOSS is our lifeblood. That is absolutely true in transportation. Every single vehicle we purchase comes through, comes through SPOSS and has since, since I started in 2017 and well before. If you look at SPOSS 5, we purchased 114 buses, as well as fitted 262 buses with air conditioning to the tune of $13.3 million. SPOSS 6, which is currently ongoing, we've purchased 97 buses. We've also rebuilt the engines of 26 buses, as well as provided additional hardware radios and GPS systems. As of right now, with what we've spent and what's in As of right now, with what we've spent and what's encumbered with our bus purchases, we are, we're at $14.6 million with a little bit over two remaining in those SPOSS funds. But we also have some additional funding from the state that we're going to be using to purchase additional buses and vehicles as we move forward. What have we done differently? We started taking a look at some safety equipment that we could add to our buses to increase the safety for our students and our drivers. Starting with our purchases in December 2023, we started adding LED lighted signage to our buses, much like you'd see on some first responder vehicles. So that way, as we're operating in the dark, which we do, particularly in the winter months, it's easy to tell if you're dealing with a school bus or one of the other different variations of trucks or vans that are driving around Forsyth County on a regular basis. The other two pieces that we regularly include, all of our school buses are equipped with radios that are attached to the Forsyth County EMS and first responder network. Mr. Grimes is well aware of how this works because he was at EMS when we started that partnership. We also have GPS tracking available on all of our buses, as well as many of our white fleet vehicles. One other additional piece that we started in December 2023 is we started to incorporate backup cameras onto our buses because that's the most dangerous area is behind the school bus. So we wanted to make sure that we could see what was back there. And so all of our new bus purchases include all of this equipment. One of the things for those, for Mr. McCall and Mr. Valdez, you guys were here last fall when I presented some information about propane fueled buses. We've actually made that project a reality for Forsyth County schools. Our interest in that was propane buses have a, have an ability to reduce over a fleet cost because fuel is less expensive, reduce bus maintenance costs because we're not dealing with diesel exhaust systems and trying to comply with EPA environmental regulations, as well as environmental emissions and compliance costs. When you purchase diesel or gasoline, there is a, there is a fee that comes with it to make sure that if there is a spill or something happens environmentally, that the state or the federal government is able to pay for it. And so as we move into this alternative fuel field, we simply won't have that additional cost with propane. Spring through fall 2024, we put out an RFP both for fuel system, we also started taking a look at vehicles. And as of right now, you'll be happy to know that you are almost the owners of a propane fuel system, as well as 20 propane buses that we are going to be getting on the road as soon as school starts here in August. Another area in which we branched out has been into special use buses. We have, if you look up in the top right corner, Sarah Taylor approached our department a couple of years ago, asking if it would be possible to have transportation for the Spark program that the school district operates. So we were able to purchase two Spark buses through some funds that she had available. Those are, those are both operational. CTAE approached us about having a 14 plus one vehicle, which means it's a school bus, but you're not really, you don't have to have a CDL to drive it. There is training that goes along with it, it's just not quite as extensive as having to go through school bus training with a commercial driver's license. Last piece of the puzzle is we purchased 20 specific activity and field trip buses with some particular equipment that we thought was important for field trips. One is expanded space for luggage and equipment. Second is seat belts. We wanted to pilot seat belt use and just sort of see what that might look like. We figured this was the best opportunity to do that. These buses tend to spend more time on interstates, on 400, on longer trips at night. And so we felt adding that safety feature to these particular vehicles to start to take a look at it would be, would be a smart way to do that. Something Mr. Grimes asked about last year was fleet inspection and safety. We're required by state law and by Georgia DOE Board rules to have an inspection program in place for our buses and vehicles. And we have a pretty robust inspection system, one every single year annually. And if you want to, if you want to see, get involved in the excitement, if you want to come up to the bus shop, either down by Lambert High School or up by North High, starting on Monday, August 11th, we're going to have the Georgia Department of Public Safety Motor Carrier Compliance Division with our mechanics inspecting our vehicles. And all 520 of them will be rolling through those two, those two shops to get inspected by the Department of Public Safety, that's required every year. In addition to that, every single month, we have a 20-day inspection schedule where all 520 of our school buses go through an inspection with our mechanics, similar in nature to what the Georgia Department of Public Safety does, but that's locally run and it's required by law and by DOE Board rule. On top of that, every single day, in the mornings and the afternoons, before buses go on or out, our drivers are required to inspect their vehicles before they get them on the road with kids. And they're also required to inspect those vehicles when they're finished to make sure that they're, they're able to be secure and parked safely until the next time those buses come into use. Last but not least, anytime we purchase a new vehicle, we're required to inspect it. And we have a form that we're required to fill out by the state to make sure that those buses, when they come in from the manufacturer, are safe and ready for use with our kids and our drivers. Last but not least, we have some important things we do with people. One, new bus driver training. All of our bus drivers are required to go through a state mandated training program, which has a number of different parts. Criminal background and NVR checks for every single person, a physical exam. Everyone who is qualified to drive a bus in Forsyth County schools, we train them and test them so they can earn their CDL Class B license with a school bus and passenger endorsement. In order to, in order to complete training, those drivers are required to drive a minimum of 12 hours, six with kids, six without. And one of the things that I want to thank this board and Mr. Hershey and Mr. Hamel for allowing us to do, one of the ways in which we're able to help resolve our school bus shortages is we're able to increase the pool of people who are interested in applying to be a school bus driver because we're paying them to train. One of the big gaps that we saw is that, is that if we had folks who might be interested in driving a bus, however, they had another job and couldn't afford to take time off to come and do the amount of training they needed to do in order to drive with us, we made sure that we put something in place that didn't mean they would have to stop getting paid at the job they're at and come to us for free. So I want to thank you guys for that support. All of our drivers, and most importantly, our veteran drivers, every single year, the state DOE requires that all of our drivers go through a safety renewal program in the summer. Also, in the summer, every single one of our drivers and monitors goes through a physical exam. And every year, every calendar year, we're required to have our employees go through random drug and alcohol testing. Probably the other two pieces, we require our drivers and the state requires our drivers to go through emergency evacuation drills with our students twice a year. And on top of that, each one of our drivers in the spring goes through an annual driver skills assessment. You know, think driving on a course with cones and making sure that everybody can perform all of the, all the maneuvers and functions that they need to perform to effectively drive a bus. Last but not least, the thing we're most proud of is what we do with kids. Every single year in the spring, we go to pre-K schools all over the county and we offer a bus safety program to those students. So they come into kindergarten, those who are involved in a pre-K program in Forsyth County, having a better understanding of what needs to happen for them to be safe in and around the school bus. And then in the fall, every single year, we offer a face-to-face training program. Every single student who's enrolled and present in school the day we offer those programs in our elementary schools gets trained on how to be safe at the bus stop, crossing the street, getting on and off the bus, and then evacuating the bus and how to be safe while you're riding. And that's it in a nutshell. So I'm happy to take any questions if you guys have any.
It does feel good to buy vehicles with cash, doesn't it?
And the one thing that I didn't say, but I think it was noted on the slides, is that from SPOSS 6 and every single investment we've made, Mr. McCall has been debt-free.
Debt-free. I do have a question. On the slide about ridership, you said you have to report that once a year to the state?
We don't have to report it, we collect it.
Okay, do you know what the surrounding counties are at? Because of 57% ride share, or ridership, what is that compared to other counties?
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to find out for you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you guys maintain and take care of all the white fleet vehicles as well?
We do.
Okay, I didn't know that. So can we participate in one of the cone mazes with a bus or?
Bus rodeo?
Absolutely. If you guys want to come up, when we get everything set up, one of two ways. You can either come through and get qualified to be a bus driver, be happy to train you, or you can come up doing skills assessment and we'll put you in a bus and you can come through and we can do that.
I think the board should participate in that for employee morale so they can see that they drive much better than we do.
All right, we're open every day.
Mr. Underhill, not Mr. Underhill, Mr. Usher.
Is that real?
Mr. Usherwood and I were talking earlier about some retreat competitions. So we may can incorporate some, some bus mazes into that.
Yeah, we'll be happy, we'll be happy to do that.
I want to say, I'm going to still, Mr. Usherwood said, has made a comment about, and I think showing the, how many new drivers we have and the teamwork that has been displayed between different departments is really something that not only we trust our people, but we've empowered our people to go out and do that. And I really think that that is important. And I just want to say, I know you've already thanked everybody, but I really think that's, I mean, it shows that when we put everybody together and we have that teamwork, what can it be accomplished? So I just want to say thank you for that.
That number hovered like between 65 and 85 as long as I've been on the board. And I'm glad to see that the steps you guys recommended are paying off. Good job. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you all, have a great night.
All right, next up, the finance report with Mr. Larry Hamerall.
Well, mine's not quite as riveting as buses.
No, no, you promised riveting.
I'm feeling kind of down right now.
Does that start September 4th?
Let's see what we can do, jazz is up tonight. I don't know, maybe I'll do a rap the whole time. Anyways, tonight, we're going to talk about the June 2025 financial statements. As always, we keep goal five in mind. So we started the month off with about $210 million. We ended the month about $185.5. This time last year, we had about $168.2 million. The revenue and expenditures were normal for this time of the year. Just to kind of give you an idea what it looks like, so these graphs, we introduced these graphs last month. And with starting in July, one of the things I'll try to do is maybe break the graphs up where they're, and unfortunately, with this kind of graph, with activity, you notice that the goes from 90 million to 360. And what I'm thinking next month is maybe I'll try to make it less, number-wise, make it a greater breakdown, but maybe by millions or five millions or something, so you can get a better idea how that looks, the graph, as we go forward with July and August and so on, each month. As you can see, the cash position is basically following the same type of graph in the previous year from '24, as well as fund balance position. We were slightly ahead on fund balance back in November. As you can see, as I kept telling you, you know, we were slightly spending more money than we were bringing in revenue. And that fund balance, which I thought would go below '24, actually is slightly above '25. So it looks like we pulled it out this year a little bit. And we're slightly ahead where we were last year, not by law, but by a little. And when we look at the revenue breakdown going across, you can see we've collected 100% of both our Avalon tax, our intangible tax, and our real estate transfer tax. Last year, we were really upside down on both the intangible and real estate tax. We had to make some major changes to our budget last year. So we're slightly ahead in those areas. The one area that we thought was going to do better this year, but of course, we didn't know how that was going to be affected by the stuff going on in the economy, was the tie-off alarm tax. And we only got about 84% of that. We've made major changes to that in this year's budget for '26. Other areas was interest earned. The rates went down a little bit faster than we thought at one point compared to what we thought. It took a 75 basis hit. So you can see that instead of collecting about 9.1, we're at 8.3, or about 91%. Most of the other areas you'll see is we're ahead of schedule. The one thing I did want to point out was the QBE earnings. We thought we would get about $4 million in midterm money, but we only got about two. So that's why it's only at 99.91%. But overall, we're at 99.53% collections. So we're only up by 0.47% in total for the budget in terms of what we had planned.
Yes, sir. On the other state grants from Georgia Department of Education that we're about, it looks about $2.8 million behind, any?
We're ahead, actually.
I was at ahead.
I'm sorry, we are behind. Yeah, so what we did is we set some budget numbers up and we are going to be pulling some additional funds in, but we hadn't set receivables up yet. So what you're looking at is mostly cash activity. We do have some accounts receivables and accounts payable to set up as we close out July, August, and September for the year end. If you kind of look at that in terms of like last year, you'll notice last year we were a lot ahead. Last year, we ended up about like 100, 100.2%, 100.4% collections. So we're back behind last year where we were collecting. And then if you just kind of look at the, in terms of how we collect it, you'll notice QBE makes up a big percentage every month outside of the normal October, November, December time period, where we collect a lot of our Avalon tax. Now, if we compare it to the budget, you'll see that, you know, at one point in October, we were actually spending less and then they got slightly ahead in November. You can see we pretty much ended the year almost dead on. Now, if we look at the expense side of things, we only spent 98.7% of our expenditures. This time last year, we're at 98.85, so we did slightly better than we did last year. And because it's 98.7 versus where the revenue is 99.53, that's how we are able to pull it slightly ahead on our revenue over expenditures and the fund balance went up a little bit. Again, if you look at the spreadsheet in terms of expenses compared to '24 and '25, you'll see we're slightly below that, but not much in material wise if you look at the graph. And again, if you look at the expenditures, most of our money we spend each month, a good 75% of it is almost instruction. And again, if you look at the budget, it's been dead on almost from the entire month. The one thing we do do is we do a very good job of when we take the expenses and look at the breakdown by months, we do a good job on our cash flow analysis to make sure we're as close as possible. We use about 12 to 15 years of historical data to get rid of the bumps year to years in terms of like the differences between months. Now, if we look at debt service analysis, excuse me, cash analysis, you notice we have about $6.5 million total in debt service. This time last year, we had about $46 million. So debt service itself is about 5, 5.3 this time last year versus where we are this year, which is slightly over a million dollars. And last year, we had about $34.5 million in this loss account versus 5.5. Right now, we've got a lot of projects finishing up in the current phase. And with that being said, a lot of the money that we had in LGIP, we've pulled out at the end of June, beginning of July, after these books were closed. And we have at about $15 million we ended up paying out in July to close out most of those projects. And those projects are, what would you say, Matt? Those projects about 90% finished? Okay. Special revenue funds, they are worth, typically at this time of the year, we still got some money we need to spend, about $2.1 million. Typically, that's because the federal programs run through September 30th. On caper projects and food service, we ended the year with about $15.9 million in caper projects. We had about 8.8 last year on school nutrition. We've got 23 versus 21. I do want to go back one slide real quick. I do want to point out one thing. There's been a lot of information flowing down from the federal government, through the state, through GDE, through us. Right now, we've been told that all of these federal funds are on hold. We're not told when we're expected to get the money. Now in that, we're being told there's several Title II and Title III programs that may not be fully funded. So right now, it looks like we're going to have to pick up about a million dollars a month in federal program expenditures between now and October. And hopefully, once everything's worked out at the state level and federal level, we'll get a big chunk of that money at once when it comes in. But we will be having to carry those programs for the next several months. those programs for the next several months, just FYI. If you look at investment summary.
Larry, can I?
That was like a mic drop.
Yeah, can I, let me jump back to that for just a second. So just to be clear, because I want to make sure I'm explaining this properly as well. All the federal funds that come in, whether it's for special education, whether it's Title I, whatever the situation is, those are all on hold right now. They haven't been threatened to be defunded, but a lot of those, they're just jammed up right now because they're coming from the federal government much slower than anticipated to the state, and then it flows from the state to us. So there's going to be delays in those, but it's not that we're not going to get those. We don't have any belief or any indication we're not going to get those. The one area that we do have some concern about not receiving would be in some of the title programs like Title II, Title III, some of those programs, we've got concerns. The grand total that we believe we could end up not receiving out of those is somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million or a million five total, not by month, but total for the year.
Correct.
Correct in saying that?
Yes.
Yeah, the others that he's talking about, we would be using of those federal dollars, a million dollars a month, what probably will happen is come October, November, all of a sudden, we'll just get a big plop into our account of federal funds
Correct.
that normally come to us, you know, slowly over time.
So I think it's clear to say that the services won't stop.
No, the services will not stop.
And that's the reason why we have a fund balance, you know, to cover some of these things. But I think to be very clear about that.
With, look at investment summary, you can see in Fund One Hundred, we have about a hundred and nine million dollars. This time last year, we had about a hundred and three. As we go forward, we'll still be pulling out about twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-seven million a month between now and probably beginning of October before we see the first drop of our property tax money. The good thing is, is we're a little ahead of schedule with us and the county, if you can believe it, with Milage actually, where we might get everything approved about a week and a half earlier than we did last year, which means we'll start pulling that money about a week and a half earlier than we did last year, last year. I mean, last year in terms of what we got. Last year, we didn't get really a first big drop until the end of October. We should get it closer to the middle of October. Fund Two Hundred Debt Service, we're down about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand versus four million. Six hundred Fund, we're at sixteen point two versus fourteen point five. And three fifty-two Fund, our SPOS six, we're down to five point five versus thirty-four million dollars. On the Avalon, as you can see, the last twelve months of collections is about a hundred and ninety-two point five versus about a hundred and eighty-five million. So we're slowly still collecting a little bit more. At the current rate we're collecting though, right now at peers, we'll collect about six months in advance, which will put us in October of twenty-six in terms of like would be the last time we could collect the money, or that would be the last collection sent to us for September thirtieth.
And this is, I just, given the recent news, I want to make sure that we clarify this for anybody that's watching, Larry. When we have a SPOS, as we did with SPOS six that was passed in twenty twenty-two, it can run all the way until the maximum amount, the months you could collect is up until twenty twenty-seven, sixty months. However, if you reach the threshold, your goal at any time during that, the quarter that you hit your goal in, you can continue to collect to the end of that quarter, and then it stops. And so actually, your SPOS expires once you've collected the total that you had asked the voters to be able to pass the SPOS for. What Larry is saying is that could happen as early as September of twenty twenty-six, which is why, and Larry and Matt are going to go meet this Friday with the Board of Registrars or Board of Registrations to explain that to them, because there was some misunderstanding about why we're asking for that to go to the voters so early. Well, it's because what you don't want to have is a gap. You want to extend this SPOS so it's a seamless, you know, hopefully, it'll be a seamless transition from SPOS six to SPOS seven if the voters will pass that. But you have to do that in advance, otherwise you'll end up with a gap where you could have three to six months where all projects that we were hoping to do a SPOS would come to a grinding halt. Or worst case, if we don't have the SPOS pass or there's a gap and there are projects we still have to pay for, we're going to have to find another means for revenue, which, you know, which we would prefer the SPOS.
I think this merits some clarification because it did generate significant chatter in the community. There was information put out there that the Board of Education was asking for SPOS seventeen months early. And that's not at all what the Board of Education is asking for. The Board of Education is asking for an approval which can only be asked for in certain intervals per year, and this is one of them, because we anticipate that SPOS can expire six months early. So the whole point is to prevent a lapse in SPOS funding, which would either result in canceled projects or the school system having to draw down its cash to pay for these projects.
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, on the elementary schools, the receivables, disbursements are normal for this time of the year, and we ended it with about four point six million dollars in the bank accounts, with about four point four last year at this time. For middle schools and also for high schools, receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Middle schools were at one point eight versus one point eight last year, and high schools ended at about seven point two, and they're down to, they were at six six last year. With that being said, the high schools have a higher percentage of total of the actual balances compared to last year by about one percent. But last year, we're at twelve point eight versus thirteen point six million dollars in cash accounts at the schools. And that ends the June financials for twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamerle.
All right.
All right, members. Next up, we have two action items on the agenda. First is literacy, high-quality instructional materials with Dr. Amy Bartlett and Company.
About to wrap group, Larry, want to beat your show here. Good evening, everybody.
Do you have any graphs, Dr. Bartlett?
We have better-than graphs. We're going to incorporate the graphs into our presentation, Mr. Hamerle. You're going to be very impressed as we talk about literacy, one of our favorite things in TNL to talk about. So we are here this evening to bring to you an update on aligning our literacy practices in Forsyth County to the state policies and legislation that is in effect, alignment to our district goals, looking at our twenty twenty-five government team, governance team and strategic plan goals. This clearly relates to our learner experience as we seek to increase student achievement and growth, as well as student engagement and staff recruitment and development as we're building our staff's capacity to effectively teach and reach all of our students. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to two members of our team, our Director of Teaching and Learning that oversees academics, Katie Carlson, and our ELA Specialist, Dr. Courtney Bean.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I want to share just a quick overview of the legislative priorities that we are discussing when we talk about this state reporting. Starting in two thousand and nineteen, Senate Bill Forty-eight, which is referred to as the dyslexia law, came about, and it went through several iterations and guidance documents. And the legislation then enacted the Georgia Literacy Act in the twenty twenty-three session. This was House Bill Five Thirty-eight with a subsequent Senate bill that kind of combined together. For the past year and a half, we have been working under guidance from the state that relate to these two, or three really, legislative issues. This past spring, House Bill Three-O-Seven was enacted, and that is called GELDA, the Georgia Early Literacy and Dyslexia Act. And we are actually very excited about this because what it did was it brought all of these other legislations out there, and there are a few more little ones, together into one place and provided guidance for us moving forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So based on what we have had in the past, there are five required components: high-quality instructional materials for kindergarten through third grade, a universal and dyslexia screening process, tiered reading supports and characteristics of dyslexia plans, including monitoring, teacher training requiring state-approved professional learning, and then reporting, which includes parent communication and state reporting guidelines throughout the year. So I wanted to give you a quick overview of what we did report to the state during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The first category we presented was universal screening. And so we did identify that iReady was our approved screener. It is one of five state-approved screeners. We had eight hundred and eighty-five certified staff trained to use that screener. And at the end of the year, we had the following percentages of students in kindergarten through third grade who were at or above benchmark. So you can see that they're relatively similar, starting with eighty-two percent in kindergarten to eighty-five percent in third grade. The second area that we state-report is in our reading support. These are interventions and monitoring. We did have certified staff who administered the dyslexia screener during the winter universal screening window. That screener includes an adaptive online diagnostic and three one-to-one teacher administered literacy tasks for every student. So based on that information, we had three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine K-three students who did participate in reading interventions. Three hundred and ninety-five of those students participated in additional screening for characteristics of dyslexia, and then two hundred and forty were identified as having characteristics of dyslexia at that time. So that followed a process throughout the whole year. Our third state reporting area was in teacher training, and our K-five certified staff members met the state-approved requirements. The law required K-three teachers. We expanded that to include all of our K-five certified staff members. Based on that extension, we had two hundred and eighteen who were reading endorsed, a hundred and thirty-two who received the dyslexia endorsement, six who had an approved program through the International Dyslexia Association, and one thousand five hundred and fifty-four certified staff member who completed the Georgia Learns Literacy Academy. And so the final area that we report to the state is high-quality instructional materials. We have identified the high-quality instructional material in a bundled approach, and these support the Forsyth County Schools' Literacy Essentials that you'll see in the diagram there. They align with the science of reading and meet the requirements of Georgia Department of Education's rubric for vetting those instructional materials. And so these materials that we present to you serve as our core instruction for Georgia's K-12 Standards for English Language Arts. These were the high-quality instructional materials that were approved by the board for this past year. And you'll see that the color-coded areas are our literacy essentials, the different domains. And then for each grade level, we have different resources for each of those domains. And that's why we call it a bundled approach, because we found that there was not a single resource that met all of those requirements and our needs. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bean, who's going to tell a little bit more about the shift we are now making moving forward.
Thank you. So I'm excited to talk with you about the new standards. I think these standards and the related resources we've developed are a gift that our teachers and students are about to open this year. I'd like to share with you the three main shifts that we'll focus on and that we've been focusing on in our professional learning as we've prepared to adopt these new standards. That is texts of varied modes, practices to support literacy growth, and the reciprocity of reading and writing. So texts of varied modes, we've expanded the definition, the state has expanded the definition of what a text is. A text is anything that communicates a message to an audience. So if you look at the examples of texts, there's a lot of things that we might not have previously considered to be text that now fall in that space. Even Mr. Hamerle's graphs, right, count as an example of text because they're communicating a message to us. And they're high quality, right? And when you think about the way we receive information, right, we learn in myriad ways. We look online, we consult videos, we listen to podcasts. So I love that this honors the way that we all as human beings receive information. Nothing will ever replace a printed text. That's still critically important. But now children will get to engage with texts of all varieties. And I think about what that can do for students' engagement and some of our reluctant readers, and that's truly exciting. We'll always look at text through these main components of the context in which the text was written, or in which the child is authoring the text, and then the author, audience, and purpose of the text. The other area that we're going to focus on is the literacy practices that support growth. I'm super excited about these as well because they offer an opportunity for us to provide an increase in academic discourse, which we know is needed for our children. And they'll be able to develop personal and academic identities as readers and writers, as presenters and collaborators as well. A lot of goal-setting is involved in that.
And aligns really well with a learner profile.
Yes, it does. And when I think about the opportunity for us to be cross-curricular with this, when we expand this definition of text, when we ask children to think deeply and communicate deeply about text, there's so much that can be done across science and social studies and literacy altogether. The next exciting shift is the reciprocity of reading and writing. Reading and writing have always been two sides of the same coin. So they shouldn't be separated out, and our new standards allow us to teach in that way. As you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, we have interpreting texts, which means that we're asking children to read, listen, or view, and then constructing texts, which means they're sharing information by either writing, or speaking, or creating. We also have, you know, heard from our community a little bit about handwriting. That's been brought to the forefront, and I just wanted to cite that. This requirement for students to transcribe, for them to print, or for them to write in cursive, is something that's critically important. We know it strengthens neural pathways. So it's not good for them just as writers, but it actually enhances their ability to read well. So we're very excited about these three main shifts.
I love listening to Dr. Bean talk about the science of reading. And as you can see with the neural pathways conversations, it really is science here. So based on those shifts in the Georgia English Language Arts standards and the identification of the importance of the science of reading, we do recommend moving forward again with the bundled approach for high-quality instructional materials for kindergarten through third grade. And we have found that at this time, they are the best resources and do continue to meet the requirements of that supplemental rubric for vetting.
And with that, I recommend to the board approval of the literacy high-quality instructional materials presented this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the action item A, literacy high-quality instructional materials? A motion by Mr. Usherwood or second by Mrs. Hoyes? Any discussion, questions?
I have two questions.
You only can have one, though.
You showed earlier in the presentation the number of staff that had gone and gotten different types of certifications, whether it be through PSC. What do those, like over and above, what do they do? What do some of those certifications take for them to be able to get that extra certification?
Sure. I'll go back for just a minute.
The minimum just to meet requirements was twenty-five hours, correct?
The bottom one, the Georgia Learns Literacy Academy, would be the minimum one. And that is an asynchronous platform, modules that Georgia Learns produces with the Cox campus. And so there are two different platforms there. One is for specials teachers, counselors, and then one is for classroom teachers. So those are ten and twenty-five hours right there. The dyslexia endorsement and reading endorsement are, I mean, year-long programs that are around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty hours. What dyslexia endorsement is?
Yeah, three different courses, and it lasts the duration of a school year. So Dr. Bean and I go lead that through Metro RISA. We're going to be working to look at if we can bring that locally, but at least we can afford it to our teachers here. We've offered that the last two years, and that's where you see that a hundred and thirty-two of ours, teachers have taken that here in county. But it is a year-long endorsement, and we have another four cohorts ready to go for the upcoming year.
That's the preferred for us. The IDA-approved program is actually the highest level, and that's usually going to be with private resources and organizations and companies that have dyslexia-specific materials. And it can be up to sixty hours a month of intensive, also practicum work with students. So that's why that's a very small number there.
Well, I just think it shows that, I know we had, it was, there was a certain level that was required, but how many of our teachers chose on their own to go back and do that extra work on top of classroom responsibilities and everything else, so?
And again, the state requirement was kindergarten through third grade teachers only. And again, the state requirement was kindergarten through third grade teachers only, and we extended that to our entire elementary certified staff. So this is a great accomplishment.
I think it's exciting to note, too, that for upcoming dyslexia endorsement, we actually have middle school and high school teachers who are interested in taking it, which is fascinating. Dyslexia is not something that you outgrow. You know, it's something that you have to learn to live with, and all of us as educators need to know how to best support those students. So we're thrilled for it.
And and most, if not all, of our principals completed it too at the elementary level, which is phenomenal. Yeah.
Do the teachers have to pay for these endorsements and programs?
Yes, there is a cost involved with the endorsement. Several of our schools have been so gracious in terms of funding. And of course, our Ed Foundation itself, sometimes teachers write write grants toward that, as well as our state in the past has offered grant opportunities that several of our members took advantage of last year. But there is a fee involved. The dyslexia endorsement for the full year runs just over $1,000 per teacher. So we try to help them seek sources of funding because they're not compensated on the back end. It's just they're doing it for their professional growth, but there is a cost involved.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I think it's important to share that this, you know, it could cost them money. And it's it's above and beyond hours after their job, and they know they're not getting additional compensation. They're they're wanting to do this to better their their own teaching skills, but also to help their students.
Yes.
And then the second question I had was, when we look at the screenings, you know, that are occurring during, there was one on there that where there's one-to-one screening that's done with a teacher. The one-to-one, three one-to-one teacher administered literacy task. If you just don't mind, like, how long do those take per student or what do that, what does that look like?
They're actually pretty short. They're one to two minutes, each one of them. So per student, you're talking about 10 minutes. This year, that was only done once in one window. The upcoming school year will be done in each window, so three times during the year. So it is about 10 minutes per student, three times per year.
Another piece, just to add to that really quickly, is that the results of all of our universal screening is shared with our parent community. And while the law requires that K through three, we are so excited. We have always done it K five, but this upcoming school year, we'll be extending it through eighth grade. So our parent community, you really can track your child's progress in literacy, all the way from kindergarten through eighth grade with multiple times for screening per year.
And I'm going to ask a follow-up question to that.
You said two.
I know, but it's, sorry. Is that, is that, like at the elementary level, is that the, usually their, you know, homeroom teacher, lack of a term, term doing that?
Most often, it's their homeroom teacher, but we also use other support staff in certain situations. But it is all certified, trained staff.
Gotcha. I have a couple of questions, and I, and it's going to be two. So the, you know, a lot of times, and at least in my industry, you know, a training is not a training. Some some have impact, some really are just something you put on your resume. Would you say that this this dyslexia training for staff is really making a difference or?
The, I mean, yes. I was gonna say, yes. I'd love to speak to that. So I have taken the dyslexia endorsement myself. I also teach the dyslexia endorsement. But I did all 25 hours of the Cox Campus courses so that I was walking alongside our teachers. They're incredible. I mean, the right information delivered in bite-sized, you know, pieces for teachers to be able to utilize. And then I've turned around, as I'm supporting our teachers, and use the resources that they've shared in the things that we're developing for professional learning, for use in the classroom, so that our teachers can continue to see this wasn't a one-off, right? This is learning that we needed, and here's how we're going to apply that in our classrooms.
Thank you.
We found a lot of value. We, Sarah Taylor's here, we had all of our school psychologists and special education facilitators also take these modules, and it's it's been incredible.
I mean, if it's something that's really making a difference, and I hate to say this kind of stuff publicly, but, you know, perhaps we could look at a way to fund, you know, at least a portion of this. Because, I mean, if if teachers are doing this basically on their time and they're also having to either pay for it or find the funds, you know, we can probably do something about that in in the future. So I think it's something worth at least looking at and evaluating. And the second question, the I Ready benchmarks, you said they were ranging from 82 to 85%. How does that compare with like state averages?
So because there's five different screeners, every county chooses one of those five. So part of the requirement of the screening process and having choice was that they would not publish comparable data. So.
Can I make one point, though?
Well, never mind.
I'm just saying, I think there is going, we are preliminarily seeing that there is a correlation between our screening with some of our other assessments that are given at the state level. So we feel that they're very good indicators and alignment. You know, oftentimes with assessments, you you want things to line up together. And we are finding that there's there's strong alignment with those screeners and performance. So that's something that's very exciting to see because we want to formatively respond that assessments are given, these screeners are given, so we can respond to intervention and then drive instruction. And we're seeing great success with that in our schools. So that's exciting for us.
I will say two other quick things that may help answer this question. But they have a projected proficiency report that we can see throughout the year. And we have found that the alignment between projected proficiency from our I Ready data and the milestones data is almost uncannily close, right? It's it's very interesting. And then the second thing is we do have a lot of professional learning support from an I Ready team. And they come out three times a year and review our data and analyze everything and compare it to their state data and and national data. And we do outperform the state average and the national average to the point where a lot of times we're having to ask them to challenge themselves to create different ways to look at our data. So.
That's good.
It is. And we've seen, and because we do it in math as well, we've actually seen greater improvement in our reading data than just consistency in the math data. So.
Awesome.
We're hoping for great things with these kiddos when they get older.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we had a motion and a second and discussion, so I'll take the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Action Item B, Hall Creek Elementary School Playground Naming with a pair of doctors, Doctors Dugan and Johnassie.
Good evening. So there are just a couple of things we're going to share on behalf of the Communications Department tonight. One is just some progo, excuse me, some logo and program updates. I know that we have folks from special education here, so I wanted to let you all know that we have worked alongside our special education leaders to refine or retune some of the logos and the names that they're using in their programs to help connect to their families a little bit more strongly. So first up is our Sprouts Special Education Pre-K Program. So our preschool really was looking for something that represented both Forsyth County Schools and also the learning and the growth that would occur while those students are in those programs, getting those early interventions. So thank you to Sarah Taylor, Cara, and her teams for this logo refresh and update. We love the idea of small beginnings, but big possibilities. And it really goes to what our our others, Sarah, our community partner, shared about getting in early and making sure our kids have the right tools to be successful. So they were very excited to update their new logo and share with the families that they serve. Another special education program that exists within our district that is attached to the campus of Forsyth Central High School is about to have an exciting grand reopening. They've added some playground equipment. They've had some building updates. And so with that, it was time, for the first time since that program has been in existence, to update and refresh moving from kind of an iPhone iFocus lens back when that building was built to something that was representative of their families and their students and that their kids and their staff could feel connected to. And so that program shift is now SAIL. SAIL stands for Student Achievement and Individualized Learning. And it's identifiable. It's got the blue colors. There's some great maritime theming going on throughout the building that you'll see in some of their classroom spaces. But probably most importantly, they wanted an icon they could say, hey, that's where I go to school. I am proud. And so this is our SAIL whale, who will be named by the families this year. And they'll take a vote, and they have a whole process they're going through. But even though that does not require a vote by the board, we wanted to share with our public. We wanted to share with you all these great improvements to the program names. Again, the focus there is connection for our families, and our kids are so proud to represent these programs. So if you can, if you want to offer a name for the SAIL whale, you can put your bid in for that as well. Moving on to our option item tonight, I have Dr. Ashley Johnassie here with me, the proud principal at Hall Creek Elementary. And they have submitted a request per our policy F D C dash R two that is for renaming either a portion or a part, in this case of a playground, to to a different name. And so let me read a little bit about her proposal on behalf of Hall Creek. So the school submits the proposal for board approval to dedicate a portion of their school playground that will be, have a grand opening here next week in memory of Ms. Tammy Huntley. Ms. Huntley was an incredible educator in our school system. She had been with Forsyth County Schools since 2003. I believe that's right. And actually started at Chesty before moving to Hall Creek. She knew Dr. Johnassie when she was a new teacher back then. Her dedication, her spirit, her her way that she loved kids is represented in the proposal from Dr. Johnassie. Specifically, they call out her heart, her joy, and her steadfast commitment to nurturing both students and colleagues. She was a great mentor to many other teachers. When she passed, there was such an incredible outpouring of how she supported her students in the community and also the parents who felt like they had a partner and an educator as their kids rose through the ranks of Forsyth County Schools. So she was nominated and won Teacher of the Month. She often was found at extracurricular activities, supporting her kids even after they left elementary. And then at the the core, Dr. Johnassie says that she embodied the school's core values of joy, growth, connect, team, and empower. And so as Dr. Johnassie and Hall Creek reopen this playground and add this additional really exciting playground equipment that will allow for all students, including students who might have mobility challenges, to independently access this new playground, they felt it was very appropriate to name it the Huntley Hub because that would be a great dedication, a great way to honor her legacy in Forsyth County Schools, and also the love she shared for all of her friends at Hall Creek Elementary.
So at this time, I would recommend to the board approval for the renaming of the Hall Creek Playground.
Do I have a motion to approve Action Item B, Hall Creek Elementary School Playground Naming?
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion, questions, anything to add? I'll take the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations, Dr. Johnassie. Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is points of information. Have the members received the documents in question? Anything new to add? I believe we don't have anybody for public participation. That's Jer's first meeting that he meets, he misses in years.
But he did tell us and you did give him a minute, I think, an extra three minutes, so that was, that was appropriate.
He asked for the night off. We gave Jer the night off after three years of faithful public participation. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Usherwood, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.